We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. Mr. Clark had a previous engagement. He couldn't be here tonight. Mr. Henson is going to livestream in, is my understanding. I think he's online with us. So I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Nolte.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Board members, as you can see from the agenda, we have a full work session. I appreciate Dr. Garrett every time we have one of these because she started these and it's a good way to have good discussion and think about things. And sometimes it'll save us a little bit of time in a regular board meeting. So I appreciate that. Want to say hello to Mr. Nesbit. Welcome to the board. I know, Mr. Francis, you did that, but I wanted to do it in case the livestream wasn't going.
That's right.
When you did it. And then we do have Dr. Mark Jaben, who will be second on our agenda, and I'll let Dr. Putnam interview him. First off, we had some legislative changes to the calendar and we're using these remote learning days sometimes, unconnected to weather. We had one in October and one on the general election day, and we've had one related to weather. And the potential for some this coming week, I've sent out a pending weather announcement. So Jenny Wood has agreed to come and just do a quick summary. We know we have people livestreaming in and we may have her do this again on Monday at the regular board meeting, just because it is new and we want everyone to be on the same page with those. So Jenny, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, good evening. So I just wanted to come and give you an update since we've used three remote learning workdays now. And you can see, this is the very first calendar that you adopted back last December. And this was before the remote learning workdays were directed by the state. It was before the ransomware and all of that. So I just wanted you to take a look at that first. And then I'm going to pull up the next calendar, which was after, you can see, the ransomware and we put the remote learning workdays in there. And so the state directed us to use five remote learning workdays or to add five remote learning workdays into our current calendar, which meant that we did not replace those or you do not replace those with instructional days that were already there. So we took four of the optional workdays that we had scheduled and then we took one early release day and we made the five remote learning workdays. So that's how that was brought about. And then I'm going to move you up to where we are now. We've had a few revisions. Okay, so this is the current calendar. I'm going to back it up to just the first semester since that's where we're at. So we did use a remote learning workday on October the 19th, which was scheduled. We used one on November the 3rd, which was scheduled. And then we had one on December 1st, which was not scheduled. And I think there was a little bit of confusion about how that worked. So remote learning workdays are instructional days and we do count the hours for that. We're currently counting six hours. That may change as we move forward in years to come. They are not the snow make-up days. They are swap days. So what we did is we had a remote learning workday scheduled for February the 15th. All we did is take that remote learning workday, which is an instructional day, and place it on December 1st and make the regular day that was December 1st on February 15th. We just swapped them. Okay? So students are assigned work on those remote learning workdays. And we talked to the principals at a principals' meeting in maybe in October, I don't know if it was September or October, and got their input on how many days' notice teachers would need to be able to prepare for a remote learning workday when we know that that is, that weather is coming. And they advised us or thought that the teachers would appreciate 48 hours' notice. So we've been trying to stick to that. And Dr. Nolte is very good about sending out pending weather announcements. So when remote learning workdays occur, whether they are in the calendar or whether they are announced as a snow, students are going to stay at home, but we're going to call it a remote learning workday. Students will have assignments on that day. Some of them may be digital, some may not. It just depends on the, you know, what the teacher signs and the assignments vary. So they would have assignments at work if they were face-to-face or, you know, virtual. They will have assignments on remote learning workdays. So what that means for teachers, though, because we did replace those optional teacher workdays with remote learning workdays, those still are optional teacher workdays. So teachers or staff have the option to work or not work.
They just have to do the assignments.
The kids have to do the assignments. Teachers should already have prepared the students before they went home, whatever day. If he said, you know, it looks like it's going to snow tomorrow, teachers would have had enough notice to know that that, okay, kids, when you go home, if it is a workday tomorrow, this is what you're going to need to do, whether it's on Google Classroom or whether it's pen and paper, pencil paper, they should know. It does not affect our employee calendar because employees or certified staff work 215 days. Our calendar is driven by instruction. And I know Jim Harley knows this because he's been on the calendar committee for the past few years, but it is driven by instruction and we put our employee days around that instruction, which is where we get the workdays, the holidays, the annual leave days, that. So they're going to work 215 days, whether it's instructional days, remote learning workdays, holidays, or whatever. The remote learning workdays are, like I said, they are counted as hours. So students, essentially, we aren't taking any time away. We can, you know, moving forward, if we have a bad January, we have the option from the state to add five more if need be. We just have not put that in there yet because we don't know that we're going to need that. And those remote learning workdays, because kids and we can't count those hours, those will not need to be waived or made up. I think there's confusion on maybe our language of making up days and swapping days. Essentially, what remote learning workdays are is just swapping. We're not adding, we're not taking away any days. They're already there. So I just wanted to clarify some of that in case you get questions or questions from parents or teachers. We explained it to the principals again yesterday and I think they, everybody's on the same page with it right now. So do you guys have any questions about the calendar or what remote learning workdays are intended or designed to do or to be for students?
You said something about how much that we're counting six hours for the remote learning days and that could change.
It could change.
How so? More or less?
Yeah, this is my standard COVID response. We've never done this before. So they told us to assign, I've had that conversation with Dr. Jaben. So we had to assign time to those days. We'll look at those days this year and try to get a feel for the amount of time that actually, on average, K-12, we were actually assigning to students and make that a little more realistic number. We think we will get to our required 1,025 hours without those days. They're essentially, in addition to that, the state legislature had us put those in, as Jenny said, on workdays above and beyond that. So we'll adjust that. And, you know, just guessing, because we've only had really three so far, maybe four hours. We'll look at it, try to get a good assessment of how much time, on average, students are really spending on those days and assign a time for it.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Right now, all instructional, right now, all instructional days, face-to-face or remote or Plan B, whatever, are counted as six hours.
That's what I thought.
Any other questions about remote learning workdays?
Yeah, I've had several questions from parents and then also from teachers. There was a little confusion because they're saying, oh, well, they're working and so how does that count? And is it part of their, like we said, their 215 days period? And so this day is counted, is that, that remote learning day, you said, is counted as six hours?
Or for students, it's counted as, for students. As for teachers and certified, it is an optional teacher workday.
It's an optional day.
So they have the same as any other, they have the same opportunities or options as any other optional?
So if they want to get online with the kids those days, they're welcome to. That's their option.
They are not required to meet with students on an optional teacher workday.
That's correct. Okay. That's, that was where I've had some questions on both sides.
Yeah, not a requirement at all. As a matter of fact, we don't want inequity where, you know, some teachers are doing that six hours, four, five, six times a year. Not required at all. We designed it from the very beginning. We talked to schools about that being a front-loaded day and providing essential things for students to do based upon how that class is going or what students need to do.
Well, that was kind of my response to this is new territory, so.
It is new territory. And if they take off, we really don't want them on the computer. If they use their accumulated leave, that's a Fair Labor Standards Act issue and we do not want them doing that if they're there. And, you know, they were just dying to call a student and talk to them about an assignment, we probably wouldn't worry about that too much. But this is certainly not a day where we expect students to provide the kind of instruction that they would require on a regular day, a regular student day.
I had some complaints about that and I understood that there was students on their iPads with their teachers all day. So I think just some more, some clarification out to the students and the parents and the teachers. I think everybody needs to be clarified so the expectations are clear.
We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Call me.
Not about that, but I do have a question about the calendar on the website. I know at one time, the view that we're looking at right there was available. And I know there was some things we had to go and change the way people can view it when they pull it up. It's more of a, you know, it's line by line. Is there a way to add that back and have both of them on there?
We can't post that due to the Disabilities, Americans with Disabilities Act. That view cannot be read by them and it is a violation if we put things on there that they cannot read.
Even if we do it in addition or?
That's correct. That's why we close caption.
Okay.
That's why we're required, when we have these live streams and other things, to close caption those. That is a very easy-to-read format for people who can see. And, you know, we're governed by those regulations and we shouldn't, they really frown on it when we put things on there that visually impaired person can't have their electronic assistance device reading for them. They can read narrative or lines, and so we're prohibited from doing that. We do share this, you know, in other ways internally, with staff members who prefer that. But on our website, we're told we're not allowed to do that.
If someone wants this version, they can email me.
Okay. All right, that was my next question. Is there a way, if somebody still wanted that, to request?
We'll be glad. Yeah, we'll be glad to give it to them.
Okay, thank you.
Just one of those governmental regulations.
What, remind me again, what caused the slide to June 1st?
That was, that was the unexpected impact of the tropical storm that came through.
The October 29th.
October 29th. We, I did not feel like, in having weather briefings with the National Weather Service, you know, we do those with emergency management. Our county is great to have those when weather is coming through. When we had our weather briefing more than 24 hours before that particular day, it looked like we would get maybe one to three inches and that we were very unlikely to get flooding. And when it came, that was not the case. There was certainly flooding and a lot of limbs down and so forth and so on. And so it was a little too late based upon what we had talked to principals about to call it a remote learning day. So we did what we would typically do before the remote learning days and we grabbed June 1st and swapped those two days. We moved the workday on the 29th, I mean, the student day on the 29th to June 1st. We moved June 1st to the 29th as a workday for the tropical storm.
On our weather plan, you'll notice too that we're, every year since I've been doing this, it's always said snow. So now I have to change it to just weather.
All right. Any other questions? Those are good questions. I think it's like anything else here in Haywood County. Our people are pretty sharp and we just need to do it a little while and then they'll have it. And it's, it can be confusing for all of us. These are new rules. Okay, very good. At this time, we'll move to the discussion related to COVID-19 and the impact on the county and the current school schedule and the survey that we released. Talked some with Dr. Jaben on the phone. I guess it was last week. My days are running together, Dr. Jaben. And just for the people who are livestreaming, I would like for Dr. Putnam to give Dr. Jaben a little bit of an introduction. We appreciate his work very, very much and the public, the public school nurses and other people. Dr. Putnam has worked with him more often than I have this year. And so if you would give him an introduction and then he's going to share two or three areas with us.
Yeah, it would be a pleasure to introduce Dr. Mark Jaben. He is Haywood County's Regional, Haywood County's Medical Director. And I just want to brag on him for a minute. I'm sure his services are stretched very, very thin and his attention is drawn in a million different places. I know that it's going to be a really bad day if ever there's a delay in being able to call him directly or receive a text or an email. So he's been really good to me and the school system and making sure we have the help, the guidance and support that we need to do the COVID-related activities. So he's just been, been great, a great resource. And with that, I ask him just to kind of bring us up to speed. He'll be talking on three topics, state of pandemic, COVID testing pilot program, which is certainly a hot topic, and CDC recommendations for quarantine. There were some changes there as well. And Dr. Jaben, what I'm going to ask you to do, you can, he can either come sit right there or go and sit at that mic either or, whatever you're most comfortable with. From right here?
Well, Trevor's way too kind in his introduction. And I would, I would just like to say that there are just so many people on the front line doing the grunt work essentially. And so that makes my schedule a whole lot less compressed than that. And I just want to reach out to everybody in the school system, in the health department, in county government, emergency management. I mean, I've been around this county for a while and one of the great things about this has to see all the agencies, all the different organizations actually coming together to work together. It's been a really gratifying thing and honored to be part of that. So in terms of the state of the pandemic, I guess everybody kind of knows what's happening with the pandemic right now. As of today, I think 96 out of the 100 counties in North Carolina are all in the red zone. The remaining four are orange zone. There's nobody in the green or yellow zones. And I think if you look around the country, I think 47 out of the 50 states are now in the red zone. So we're just along for that ride. I think if you look at where we were, say, six weeks ago in Haywood County, we had for many weeks, some of the lowest rates of new daily cases in the state. And that all changed fairly abruptly, starting about three to four weeks ago. Now we're amongst the highest rates. And whereas there were other counties around us that were at the highest rate when we were at the lowest rates, it's kind of flip-flopped. But now this week, after Thanksgiving, everybody's gone up. And if you look in Western North Carolina, all but Transylvania and Macon have had sharp increases. And I don't know what will happen in those counties, but I think what we're seeing is the bump now from Thanksgiving this week. Prior to this week in Haywood County, we had had, whereas we were having maybe, I don't know, two to five, two to six new cases a week, I mean, a day, so 20 cases a week increased for many weeks, that has gradually climbed up. We're looking at more, on average, 30 to 40 cases a day. And we've had some 50 and 60 cases, new cases on a day. So you can imagine what that's done to the health department staff trying to do all of the case investigation for people who are positive, not to mention all the following of close contacts and all the outreach that has to go to businesses and organizations. And then, of course, there's the long-term care facilities where we're now having five facilities, including a second round at Silver Bluff, I'm sorry to say. So that's also been a bit of a change. I think if you think about the cases that we're seeing in Haywood County, the themes remain the same throughout the entire pandemic. It's people gathering with family or gathering at work or gathering other places. Somebody in the group, everyone in the group as well, people who are sick are generally staying home. Everybody in the group as well, but somebody is in their pre-symptomatic phase, you know, the couple of days before symptoms start. Lo and behold, a couple of days later, they start to get sick. Lo and behold, now many members of the family are getting sick. And one of the things that I'll talk about in a minute, as we talk about some of this other stuff, because I think this all sort of weaves together all three of these topics. For the longest time, we were seeing where in groups, there might be somebody pre-symptomatic and in a group of 10 or 15, maybe one or two of the other folks ended up getting infected. And now we're seeing that it's not one or two out of that group. It's more like seven or 10 out of that group. We're having some of that sort of thing. I don't know what that means. I don't think anything's changed about the virus. I think it is a fact, a function of people just letting their guard down. I mean, we've been at this eight or nine months. It's pretty exhausting. It's hard to sort of keep vigilant all day, every day in all of these situations. But what we're seeing is a lot of, when we ask people, were you wearing a mask? They go, yeah, I'm wearing a mask. Well, were you wearing a mask in this situation? Well, no, I wasn't. Or they'll say, yeah, I wear a mask everywhere I go. Well, tell us, have you gone out to a restaurant recently? Well, I went out to a restaurant five days ago. Were you wearing a mask in the restaurant? Well, no. So it's that sort of a thing is what we're seeing over and over. And I think it makes it really difficult. We, our hope was that this surge happened before Thanksgiving and that we would actually see that surge sort of peak and come down before we got the bump from Thanksgiving. And actually, as I look back at the numbers, we saw the bump, we saw it come down for about three or four days last week. Not nearly as much as we had hoped. So now we're taking off from a higher baseline, the Thanksgiving bump. We've got a couple of weeks before, you know, winter holidays set in. We're hoping that this will plateau and come down a little bit before we add that bump on top of this bump. So I think that's the real danger right now in the community is that if we just keep laddering these bumps on top of bumps, where are we going to be in a month? And I think that that becomes important to the discussion about the school system in the sense that when you guys made a decision for the plan that you did, you know, that was back in, you know, August, September, I guess, rates were way lower. We were sitting in a pretty good place when those decisions were made. At that time, I think, don't quote me on this, but I think that we were somewhere around a rate of 6 per 100,000 or 10 per 100,000, which would be about six new cases a day for Haywood County. Today, we're at 53, just to give you some perspective. And to also give you some perspective, some of the states that are really struggling right now, like Montana and others, you know, they're up like 80, 90, 100. So I don't know where this, where this is going to go, but it's a different calculus. It's a different equation than when we were sitting in September, having these discussions. When you were having these discussions and I was talking with Dr. Putnam. So I think whatever decisions were made, I think obviously there were people in the school system, teachers and staff and whoever, who felt, maybe they didn't feel totally comfortable, but at the low rates, they felt comfortable. And that's changed for a lot of them. I've heard from teachers who frankly are, that's tipped them over in terms of their comfort level and being able to be sure that the measures that are being taken in the schools are actually being effective. Now, having said this, I think they've been really effective. If you think about the number of cases that have been in the school, they've largely, I think they've all come outside the school. There's been no transmission in the school. And as we talked about, I think earlier, the goal was not that people weren't going to get infected. It was that we wanted to contain that and not have one infection become 100, right? So that we're having to shut down the whole place. I think what has been happened to date has been successful in that respect. We always knew that it was mostly going to come from outside the schools and now there's a whole lot more outside the schools. Where we'll see that, I don't know. Will we see a bump before school lets out for a winter holiday? Is that holiday coming at a really good time to get everybody out of the school and let things calm down? What will happen in January when people come back? I think these are all unknowns. But again, where we're sitting now with the baseline, it changes that equation a little bit. I'm not saying that you should do anything differently in terms of what's happening in school, but I am saying that I think it bears, just a revisit to, are we still okay? Are we still okay with where we are going forward? Any questions about anything that I've said so far? Okay. The COVID testing pilot program, the state has a bunch of antigen, rapid antigen tests that they want to give to school systems to perhaps institute a testing policy in the schools. And they have put that out as a pilot program to a couple of school systems to see how that might work. And so no one's actually done this yet, to quote Dr. Nolte, we've never been here before. But that's a really interesting thing to me. I don't know, currently in the school system, if a kid, a child shows up and they're having symptoms, they're not coming to school. They're going home, right? So they're getting screened out. So I don't know that there's any benefit to us in thinking of testing symptomatic people, which has been talked about as part of the pilot, because we're already sort of dealing with that. I think where it might have some benefit is as ongoing screening for those who are in contact with a lot. And I think that's mostly the teachers and staff. There are some concerns in terms of this pilot about how are you going to get consent from parents and this, that and the other. But I don't know that that actually would be our best application in this because those kids, students are getting tested if they have symptoms. I think we could think about that in terms of a measure that might help the staff and teachers who are really reluctant right now. And the best use of those tests would be as, not as a screening mechanism. And what I mean by that is there are tests that are used to diagnose the illness and that's the test we're most familiar with, which is the PCR test. And then the antigen test is not really a test that you should use to diagnose an individual, but it is a test that can be used to screen populations of people to get a sense of where things are at. So let me give you an example of how this is, the antigen tests are being used. Federal government has, it has and is, continues to supply long-term care facilities with the antigen tests. And what the long-term care facilities are doing as part of their screening, they're doing weekly PCRs and then they're doing antigen tests every three days or so. So they're using the antigen test as a broad screen. They're having to confirm those results with a PCR. And so that is a strategy that could be useful, I think, in terms of helping people who are concerned about, were they a close contact, to get a sense of where things are at. Might it help discover some asymptomatic, you know, staff or teachers in the schools? Yes, it might do that. And it might give people a peace of mind if they're seriously testing and each test is coming up negative about where they actually are. The unfortunate thing about the antigen test is you can't rely on the negative ever unless it's done in this sort of serial fashion. So if you go get tested and it's a single test and you come up negative, you don't know anything more than what you knew before the test. So that's part of the challenge of how do we use these tests. This pilot program, my understanding is the first wave of this is going to be started before the holiday. This pilot program, my understanding is, uh, the first wave of this is gonna be started before the holiday. And I think they're hoping the state is to roll this out beyond the pilot test sometime early in the year, in January, actually. We would have to, there are a couple logistical things. If we wanted to, if we thought this was beneficial and we thought this is something we wanted to do, we would have to submit an application. The school system would have to actually submit an application. That's one part. The other part is just the logistics of how the testing is actually gonna happen and who's actually going to do the testing. It does not have to be a healthcare professional, but it does have to be somebody who's trained. The actual process of doing these antigen tests is actually not, not very difficult. But it would require that. Um, whether or not the school nurses have enough bandwidth to be able to take this on, or whether the school nurses could supervise in terms of this, I think there's lots of ways we could go about this logistically. But those are just a couple of things that would have to be worked out. I think the first question is, do you think this is beneficial? Do you wanna go there? And then we can, you know, work out the details of that. Any questions about that? Still early on, this was just, we just found out about this within the last.
How are those tests administered?
It's a nasal swab. There it comes, oh, there's a couple different kinds, but it's a nasal swab. Essentially, you take the nasal swab and you either um, put it in, either insert it into the device that does the test, or it's a card that you put onto the test. And then it gives you a result generally in about fifteen, twenty minutes.
So you're saying the kids would have to be tested?
If you were gonna.
Three times a week or twice a week or?
Well, uh, it's a really good question about what the interval is. If, when I call the CDC and I ask, what's the interval? They can't tell you because nobody, we've never been here yet. But if you look at the data from the companies that act in their literature, the way we've been doing in the nursing homes is we're serially testing every three to four days. That's how it'd be used. I think to do students that way, you're talking about a huge volume of tests. I don't know that we're gonna get that many, but it's a huge volume. You've got consent issues, and I just, I just don't know how it's gonna work with the students. With teachers and staff, though, um, I think there may be an opportunity that that could work.
Okay.
Again, I don't know the volume of what, we don't know how many of these things we would get or anything like that. And it's a lot of testing to do, however many people, or maybe another way to think about it is we're not gonna do everybody every three or four days, but we're gonna do different cohorts that way. Again, I think th- these are logistics that we'd have to sort of figure out and work out, um, if we thought it was beneficial enough to delve into it.
Yeah, if if we, we literally received an email, um, and Trevor saw it before I did at like five thirty-six or five thirty-eight PM last Friday. Okay, Trevor and I had uh, an initial conversation, and I talked to Jill on Monday. And I think we just don't know enough about, you know, how many tests we're going to get. My initial thought of, and again, we don't know enough, I don't think, to make a decision or a recommendation. But my initial thought is that if you had the capacity, you might certainly do it with staff people who will, wanted to do it voluntarily. It would give us some information, if that is allowed under the pilot. We'd have to see what the pilot requirements are also. That might give them some information that would uh, give them some level of comfort or understanding about whether, you know, about their status with COVID. I'm pretty nervous about, you know, trying to do that with all staff members without their permission, and I certainly don't want to do that with students.
You wouldn't even know how many we'd get until we applied, is that correct?
I think that's probably correct. I think we could sort of judge from the other systems that are doing the part of the pilot. We could probably see where that goes.
I see how, what our level.
Yeah.
We would have to actually apply for this.
Correct. And I've seen the application. It's not, it's not a big, long, drawn-out thing like a lot of grants and other things are.
Not like the encyclopedia.
No, it's, it's actually, it's actually not.
Sometimes that can be very cumbersome to try to do.
Yeah.
Uh, boy, I'd like for us just to get more information about the testing and formulate some kind of idea. Like I said, uh, initially, I'm very nervous about students. And I'm a little nervous too also about employees who may not want to do it. But I think we would have, based upon discussions we've had and conversations we have, we might have groups of employees that would like to do it, and it might give us some information, it might give them some comfort. So, I'd like to learn more about it, maybe come back to you.
Let's learn more about it, and then we can, if we need to take action, we will.
Yep.
Uh, you said on the, that you could get a negative test, and then you may not know anymore than you did unless you take a couple to get that baseline. What about on positive tests? What are you seeing on false positives out there on these tests as well? And people that are getting tested, they're saying positive when they're may not really be positive.
So if you look at the literature from the companies, what they even say is that a positive can be relied on only in the situation of where it's the first five days of symptoms. So if you're past five day, past day five, uh, with a positive, you you can't trust that.
Okay.
And a negative anytime, you have to be really careful about. Having said that, we have had some false positives in people in their first five days with symptoms, and we've had a couple of false positives. The only reason we know about that is because it happened in the long-term care folks. And then we, you know, we can test them right away. So what, the way that we figure that out is they're randomly doing a test, for instance, or they're doing on somebody with symptoms, it comes up positive. They can turn around and do a PCR test right then and there and send that out. You know, it takes two or three days to come back. That's been our turnaround time pretty consistently. And then they can match that up. So, you know, if you got an antigen test that's positive at noon, and a PCR test that was done at twelve oh five and it's negative, and then you repeat that, it's negative again, I mean, that was a false positive. And that's the way we've been able to figure that out in that population because they're getting tested so much. But so it, uh, it's like any other test, it's gonna have false results both ways.
Okay.
I think that, you know, for instance, if you had a a staff person and they're doing this serial antigen testing and they get a positive, um, then I think, you know, we would probably follow, you, you, we would have to follow that with a PCR test to confirm. For sure. Does that answer?
Mm-hmm. Let me ask you a question about how are the hospitals doing bed-wise and all that here in Haywood County or?
So the hospitals have been doing really well. There has definitely been a a big uptick at all of the local regional hospitals, Mission included, in the past week or two. Uh, Mission does a a weekly call with doctors, uh, talking about their situation. They basically have double the cases in the hospital, double the cases of people in the ICU over this last week. Uh, Mission, um, on a call the other day said that, uh, they had been taking transfers from outside the region because they had capacity, because they weren't really having that many cases. They've stopped doing that so they can make sure that they can service the Western North Carolina region. So there, uh, you know, I would be wrong if I said that they're stretched beyond their capacity. They're still okay, but they're seeing that sort of a ramp up. The same is true at Haywood. Um, they have probably twice the number of admissions. I think today there were sixteen admissions, fourteen of which are uh, people who are positive, two of which are people who are suspected. Um, and just, I think, last week, they have all, i- as part of their planning, they had had an area of the hospital set aside to be just a COVID unit when they got to the point that they needed that. They've now activated that. I don't think that's because they're overwhelmed or overloaded, but I think it's because they're just, you know, they're looking at the trajectory and saying, you know, let's get ourselves ready. So right now, actually, uh, you know, we're okay, we're okay. You may or may not be aware, I think, uh, earlier this week, there was some backlogs in the emergency department. There were quite a few COVID patients. Um, you know, backlogs in the emergency department happened for, at any particular time. The whole COVID thing just sort of layers on top of that. So I don't think that was anything, my understanding is that was not anything out of the ordinary, it's just what's gonna happen. You know, in a good, in the average flu season, you know, the hospital gets full and the emergency department gets overrun. So again, um, we're just layering all that on top. So I think that it, right now, the bottom line is definitely more, um, but definitely okay. Uh, I think the other challenge, and this is a challenge in the long-term care facilities, and it's gonna be perhaps a challenge in the hospital, is staffing. Because if you get uh, healthcare workers, nurses, doctors, techs, whoever, who get sick or who get exposed and need to go into quarantine, um, you can wipe out a lot of your staff. And what we've seen with all the long-term care facilities is when the outbreaks happen, the first, by about week two, they're really struggling. And the mechanism to make that up has always been travelers and agencies, and those, there are no travelers and agency nurses around. Everybody's been sucked up because everybody needs them everywhere. So one of the real challenges going forward with capacity may not necessarily be space. It may actually be staff. Um, and I think that's something to sort of uh, look out for.
Thank you. Good answer.
Yeah. And so that leaves us to let, to number three, which is the CDC recommendations for quarantine. And I'm afraid that this has been somewhat misunderstood and misinterpreted. Traditionally, and now what we're talking about is not people who are positive. Right? What we're talking about is someone who is a close contact to a positive, who themselves is not sick, but has had a close enough contact that they're at risk. And we asked those people to be quarantined, uh, and to get tested during that time, but we really asked them to be quarantined for fourteen days. The reason is the virus has an incubation period of two to fourteen days. Which means if I get exposed on Sunday, anytime from Tuesday forward to day fourteen, you may develop symptoms, anywhere along that. The average is around day six, and that's when most of the people will show that. So what the CDC has said is that for these close contacts who don't have symptoms, maybe we can shorten the the uh quarantine period to seven days or ten days. Well, actually, that's not what they said. What they said was that the quarantine period is still fourteen days. The virus still has an incubation period of fourteen days. But what they've said is there may be some options in how we manage those fourteen days. And so the options are that a person could get tested, um, around day five, six. If their test comes back negative, they continue to be asymptomatic. They could be released from their quarantine being a total separation at home, which is what it currently is. You know, when we ask people to quarantine, we ask them to separate themselves at home, separate themselves from the family, from, from anyone else, so that, so if they're infected, they're not giving it to somebody else. So what they've said is, you get tested day five, six, you have no symptoms, your test comes back negative, and that, by the way, that's a PCR test, not an antigen test. Um, then that person could be released from that, you know, strict separation at home. But that person could still become ill and infect others. And so it would be required that that person be masked at all times, socially distanced at all times. Obviously, good hand hygiene, and probably in good measure, uh, those around them should be doing the same thing through that entire fourteen-day period. The other option is that without a test at ten days, uh, that person could then be able to leave the the strict separation at home. But again, would have to be very, very careful during those fourteen days. That's not sort of how people have interpreted this, right? Right? So you can see that um, i- it really puts a burden on individuals to do that. Now, the reason the CDC did that is is interesting. Their theory is that, that many, many people were not complying because fourteen days is just too long, and I just can't stay out. And they were willing to risk some increased contagiousness in the community um, for the benefit of being able to get out of that strict isolation earlier, and that perhaps more people would comply. It's seven or ten days than fourteen. I have to tell you, I asked the CDC, where's their data that shows that people were not complying because of the length of time? And where's their data that shows that shortening into seven or ten days would make a difference? And you can imagine the response that I got. None. Um, the other thing about the CDC data is that uh, it was not based on actual experience, it was based on modeling. They had several different organizations model that. And the modeling said that there's a less than one percent chance that somebody after ten days is gonna be sick. So we looked at our data, uh, which is available to us actually through the state for Haywood County. Um, and boy, I could show you all kinds of facts and figures, but let me just put it to you this way, because I think this becomes important in terms of if we wanna go there in terms of those, those options. Essentially, it's like this. If you take a hundred people that we've asked to be in quarantine, being their close contact, they're not sick themselves, um, and out of that one hundred, between days seven and ten, so if you invoke the first option, between days seven and ten, roughly two to ten of those people would end up getting sick. So that's out of, out of a hundred, I'm, I'm sorry, that's out of five hundred. We took five hundred people in quarantine, two to ten would get sick. So it's a small number, right? Not zero, but it's a small number. Um, if we look after day ten, somewhere between one and six people would turn up infected. I'll tell you, we've already had a public service worker in the county who uh was a close contact, asymptomatic, got tested at day five. The result came back at ten, at day eight, um, negative. They went back to work. Uh, the evening of day ten, so really day eleven, they got really sick. Um, and so that is the risk of of invoking one of these options. And as I talk to people at different organizations, this, this is how I, this is how it sort of comes down to me. And by the way, for long-term care facilities, they say fourteen days, absolutely. No, none of the options for that. Uh, because those are congregate living facilities where people are close together, where the risk of one person being contagious, you know, goes like wildfire through the place. So I think the key word there is congregate. Um, not necessarily congregate living, but if an employer um, wants to invoke one of these options and they, then the business has uh, their employees being widely separate, let, let's say, I'll just use the example of a survey business, right? And they want one of their surveyors to come back at the seven days, they got a negative test. That person's gonna be out in the field, not around anybody? That's a situation that might, it might work, because they're not, even if they got sick, they're not around anybody. But you take another situation like an office, where people are on top of each other, that's congregate. And it's obviously not congregate living, but it is a congregate situation. And there, the risk of if somebody gets sick, um, infecting others is obviously much higher. So I think that those options are are there, but I think we just have to be really careful about who, who really wants to go there and what they see the risk in their, in their business and organizations. So where does that lead the schools? Are schools a congregate kind of a place? Yes. Um, so I I can imagine that there'll be a lot of parents, uh, because for them, uh, having to be home with their kids because they can't leave their kids at home if they're having to quarantine, this becomes a bigger issue because it impacts their ability to work and and everything else. So they're gonna be wanting, you know, to get back as soon as possible. Obviously, we have to balance that, that against safety. So that's the CDC, that's what the CDC recommendation actually means. I'll tell you that we in the health department have struggled with this. Um, right now, uh, you may have seen in the paper or whatnot, it's been stretched beyond stretched. And we've had to make some modifications to what we're doing right now, just to keep heads above water and try to keep up. And the modifications that we have made are really that we're going to focus on the people who are positive and continue to do the case investigation and support that we do for the people who are positive. But but right now, until we can get caught up, we're, we just don't have the bandwidth to contact all of the close contacts, follow them, test them and everything else. So what we're actually having, what we're, what we've started this week is if you're positive and you get called from the health department, we're gonna ask you to identify your close contacts and we'll work with them to do. And then leave that up to the positive person to contact their close contacts, encourage them to quarantine, um, and get tested at day six. The question then becomes, what do we do about quarantine? We have been able, when people clear quarantine, to give them a letter to say, hey, you've cleared quarantine. A lot of employers want that. We're not gonna be able to do that right now. And so it's really gonna fall, the, having to do this is gonna fall a greater burden on individuals, obviously, to deal with their close contacts, but also a greater burden on employers to make a decision about what they wanna do about quarantine and what they're willing to accept. Our hope is that we can get ourselves caught up and go back to the way that we've been doing it. And I'll tell you that just this week, we brought uh additional people in. Other people in the health, uh, health department, like environmental services or other places have come on board to help us do this. We brought in some retired folks to do this. Um, and Patrick Johnson, I'm happy to say, is back doing some of this, so it's nice to see Patrick. Uh, so we've, we've brought in what we can to try and increase our capacity. We've, we've streamlined the way that we've been doing that, which frankly means that we're not collecting a lot of data that the state wants, but that we don't feel is all that helpful to us. And we've just had to say, I'm sorry, right now, this is what we have to do. So we've made moves in that direction. We're really hoping we can caught up, get caught up pretty quickly, go back to the way that things, the way we have been doing it. That, of course, is gonna depend on what happens to case counts in the county. And if we think in terms of what we've had before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving bump on top of that, you know, wintertime bump on top of that, uh, we just don't know where that's, where that's going. From your standpoint and from the school system's standpoint, you know, the school nurses have largely been doing, uh, and the schools have been doing contact tracing when there has been a case. So that will continue. And the school nurses, um, have largely, have been determining, you know, when kids need to go home. And the school nurses have been really once making decisions about when kids and staff can come back. None of that changes, um, in the school system. The modifications that I'm talking about are really out in the general public, so that all stays in place, place for the schools. The one place where I think you have to make a decision is, what do you wanna do in terms of these CDC options in terms of quarantine, and what do you feel comfortable? And I, I, I've spoken with places that have said, you know what, we're staying with fourteen days. We've had good success doing that, and that's just what we're gonna do. And I've, I've talked with other places who say, no, we're, we're gonna entertain the other options. I think it just depends on balancing that small but present increased risk against saving that time for some folks, against the small risk that you could introduce something, against a system that up till now. against the small risk that you could introduce something, against a system that up till now worked pretty well. So that's the... Happy to entertain you questions about all of that. That's a lot of stuff to throw at you guys, but such as it is.
Mr. Francis, again, the board may want to discuss that. I have talked some with Trevor, and this is just a recommendation. But I do think the one thing that we have learned through our work with cases, and we have had cases last spring, we didn't have students in the buildings, but we had cases with our adults through the summer and into this time of year. But one of the things that seems to have worked for us in terms of not having transmissions among students at school and only having two or three little employee groups was using the fourteen day quarantine. And, you know, I just think that that might be a smart thing to hold on to right now, because we have been so lucky with not bringing people back early and them still being contagious and causing spread that we did not know about. So I've talked some with Dr. Putnam about that. And I just, and you know, he and I were together on that. I don't know if he's changed his thoughts since we talked earlier. You know, sometimes when we think about it, we change our minds, but that... Yeah, that might be one of those things that seems to be working. Let's just leave that one alone. So that's just food for thought for you. And I don't know that we ever had you approve that initially, because that was a a public health recommendation that we liked and we followed. And so unless you want us to make a change, I would like to hang on to that one.
And I think the other thing, too, is we've talked through this as well. You know, we can learn from other people, right? There are going to be other people in other systems who are more willing to adopt, you know, the shorter options. And we can figure out and see, I mean, again, the CDC did not base this on a lot of hard or fast data. And so we can let others sort of help us get some experience, and it may turn out that it's perfectly okay to use one of those shorter options. And we may find out in a month or so, or two, with other people's experience that, hey, that is the thing to do. You know, I think we've all said all along, this is all just a big experiment. You know, we've got to find our, make our best decisions and then just be willing to honor what the results are and to adjust to that. And, you know, this is very much could be one of those things. So I'll just add that to what you said.
And for the record, I just got a text from Kelly Martin Hicks, who's our lead school nurse, her buddy, who's reporting.
She's listening in, huh?
Yes.
I guess that's those three topics. Sorry to throw a lot of information at you. And I'm happy to answer questions, and even after tonight, if questions come up as you drive home and think about all this, obviously, I'm happy to talk with you at any time. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and hope that this has all been helpful to you.
Thank you, Dr. Javon. And fourteen days is a long time. But if it keeps our staff safe, er, and it's, you know, we're in a group, you know, they're in a closed setting. Like you said, somebody that's working outside, it may not be as a risk as much as somebody that's in a closed building or in close proximity to other folks. So something to ponder for sure.
And we can, and also, I mean, we can gather some more experience from, in terms of the COVID testing pilot programs, we can learn from those as well. And in terms of, you know, just where we go from here, we'll see. We'll see. Really depends on what people do in their homes and in their places of work and in their places of worship and when they go out and about. And I hope that for anyone who is reluctant to follow public health measures, I hope that this changes the balance of their decision-making in terms of what they want to do for themselves and their family and their community. So we'll see what happens. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to...
One other question, if you don't mind. And I understand the whole idea around antigen testing. I don't know that you get a lot of information from it. What about antibody testing? Is anybody doing that to see how many people are have this or asymptomatic, recover and never know any different?
Yep. So the problem with the antibody tests up until now has been that the antibody test did not necessarily distinguish one coronavirus from another coronavirus. So even if you were positive, or if you had antibodies on the test, you didn't know whether they were SARS-CoV-2 antibodies. The second problem was nobody quite knows what level of antibodies a person would need to actually have immunity, nor how long those antibodies would hang around. And so if you think back in the summer, these were the questions about antibody tests. There is now a company that has produced, has manufactured an antibody test that is specific for SARS-CoV-2. Very limited, it's not really out and about quite yet. That would be helpful. The thing about antibody tests is if I get sick today, my body will not start producing antibodies for somewhere between, you know, ten and twenty-one days. So you're going to be doing that well after, well after the person is sick. So yes, antibody testing can be helpful to get a sense in a community of what the prevalence has actually been. And that's the use of the antibody test. It cannot be used for diagnosis, and it can't be used in terms of predicting things, but you can certainly get that sense in a community, what's been there.
That was my thought. And as far as prevalence, it would be a whole lot more reliable test than an antigen test.
Well, an antigen test is not going to tell you anything about prevalence. That is correct. So you're right, the antibody test would give you that, some information in that way. The other part is, to be honest, we don't quite even know how our immune system, what goes into mounting that immune response? There's certainly antibodies that are a part of that. There's T-cell stuff and other, I mean, and memory B-cells and all this other sort of stuff. We, you know, it's a pretty complex system. But we don't yet really know where, who all is contributing to that. Again, we know a whole lot more than we knew in April, but it's still, it's still an open question. I think we will learn a little bit more about how long immunity lasts based on the kind of reinfections that we start to see. And we're starting to see some, very few. We've had a couple of cases in Haywood County that I think are reinfections. But it's very, it's very few. And if you look around the country, there's been very few that have been documented. Again, if you think about the big surge around the country in July, where was that, five months past that? There are researchers who think that, you know, you might get, you might get six months at least of immunity. So if that's true, we're going to start seeing more reinfections as we get farther away from that first round. So that, again, something to bear watching. I think the vaccine studies have, again, none of them have been out long enough to know how much immunity the antibodies last, because they can measure it in those folks. That's one of the ways that they're determining how effective, efficacious, I guess, the vaccines are. So they know that those vaccines, at least the two that have been, are probably going to get EUA approval here in the next week or so. They know that they produce a very robust antibody level. But they can't tell us how long that lasts, but they can tell us that. As we roll forward, they will continue to follow that with the people who participated in the trials. So we'll get more information about, about what antibody level is actually protective, how long it lasts. I think those are important things for people. Right now, you know, if you get an antibody test and it's positive, what people want to know is, hey, I've had it, I'm okay. I don't have to worry about getting it again. And of course, what I just told you was, maybe not. Maybe so, but also maybe not. I'll tell you that the couple of cases that I'm aware of are reinfections. The initial infection was either asymptomatic or mild. The second infection was more. And I'm not saying hospitalized more, but definitely more. So it could be that those milder or asymptomatic infections don't produce enough antibodies to really protect you for very long. Again, these are all things that we don't know yet, but we'll get figured out. Is that answer Bobby?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question on the, and I know this is something that we're still learning about and they do more research, but as far as being contagious, I've heard that you may be asymptomatic, but you would always, you're still going to run somewhat of a fever to be contagious? Is that, even though you may not be symptomatic at that point in time?
No, I think the real challenge of this virus is that people can be highly contagious with absolutely no symptoms.
Even without a fever?
Without fever.
Okay.
And so when we do, just for instance, when we do our contact tracing, we're going back two days before the person started having symptoms, because that's the period of time during which someone can be perfectly healthy and be spewing virus all over the place.
Okay.
And I think that's why you see so many examples of people will say, well, I was in a room with someone positive, you know, nobody got sick, or seven out of ten people get sick. There's just so many variables that actually go into somebody getting infected. But I think it's pretty clear that that person in that pre-symptomatic phase, which is really an asymptomatic period of time, is one of the most highly contagious times through about day three or four of symptoms, that period of time. So you can see that if you get a runny nose and maybe a little bit of a cough, and maybe you feel a little rundown, and say, well, I just, you know, I've been busy at work or whatever, and you sort of put it off several days to get tested, you've waded through your contagious period, your most contagious period. If you look at the studies, by about day seven or eight, that has peaked. The immune system is kind of kicking in. By day eight, nine, ten, the virus is, there's so little load in your system that you're no longer contagious, which is why the CDC recommendation is ten days, right? Ten days since start of symptoms, because they know that after about day eight, they haven't been able to culture any live virus because of that bell curve of viral load that your immune system takes care of. And that's why we really ask people, if you get any kind of suspected symptom, go get tested right then and there while you're still in your most contagious phase.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
While we're transitioning here, I did just want to thank Dr. Javon again, the public health nurses. He has gone out of his way to educate our staff people, beginning with a system-wide conversation and information back in August, and then smaller groups since then. And I just appreciate that, that work that you've done with our teachers and other staff members.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Need to recap on that? Few, few things?
If we need to. Do we need to recap any of that, or should we move on?
So I just wanted to say, everything for us as far as protocols and quarantine days is staying exactly the way it is. The purpose in having Dr. Javon explain that is you may get questions from out in the community. Hey, I work at such and such, and I don't have to go that long in quarantine. So I just wanted you all to be aware that that possibility exists because of the CDC guidelines. But if you hear, it's not advisable in a congregate setting, where even if it is only like one percent that actually pop positive after day five or seven, it's one person that can impact a large classroom or a school. So the risk is far greater for a larger setting. You can try it.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Trevor, for saying that. That's a really important point. What's going to happen in western North Carolina is every county is going to do it slightly different. And of course, we've got people who work in one county, live in another county, they're going back and forth all the time. We have been talking to the various counties about what their plans are with this. And every one of them says, we don't really feel comfortable with the shorter options, but now that it's out there, we feel obligated to do it. And they will do it in their own fashion. So yes, I think you're going to get, we're going to get those kinds of questions. We're already getting them at the Health Department. And the way that we're explaining that is to say, well, hey, in this situation, this is the kind of congregate setting where we don't feel it's safe enough to go with the shorter option. I think that is the way, because it's definitely going to happen that people are going to be getting mixed messages about what different counties are doing.
Thank you once again. Mr. Francis, at this time, we'll share key survey results. If there is no objection at the end of our meeting tonight, I'd like to publish that. Wanted you all to see it before we shared it with people, but we certainly had about twenty-six hundred people fill it out, and they're probably curious about the key questions. And so unless there's some objection, I'd like to share that after the meeting tonight, just so they'll have that information. You know, you all know how I can get long-winded and ramble, so I've actually made myself a cheat sheet here to try to keep me on task. What I'd like to do is just go over a little bit of background on all the information that we have gathered this year. Talk about the survey results at length with you all, and then tell you about a couple of related items that you may want to consider that really aren't typical survey items. So with that, I'll proceed. So, you know, we did, we've actually done two very large surveys now. And we did one back prior to school starting. It was a little different. It was about how do you feel and do you want to come back? Are you comfortable coming back? There were a number of questions on the first survey and on the second survey that I repeated about communication and how you communicate, and do you feel comfortable with that? And then we added, there was also one big question on both surveys about health, safety risk, and what you were concerned about, and PPE and disinfectant. So I repeated that question, because I thought that one was very important. And then based upon all the conversations that we have had from July, groups that we've met with, I met with local NCAE and talked to them, and they had done a smaller survey of their members. We added some questions mainly around the schedule, because we knew that's what people were thinking about. So that's how the survey was designed. It mirrors a lot of the first survey, but we did change it based upon where we are in the school system. So we have, we have that particular background. I want to echo what one or more of you said when we talked before, just to those people who are listening to the live stream. And just thank everyone for all the feedback you got. You folks on the board know how much that was. We had meetings, we had phone calls, we had emails, had people ask me questions in online Sunday School. You know, had questions at the grocery store and so forth and so on, but we really appreciate that. I will say that we recognize and appreciate the fact that our people talk to us, that they do participate in surveys, but they talk to us. And we know that if they're concerned enough or interested enough or want to express a particular view, they'll take the time and call us or send us an email or participate in a survey. And so everyone who has participated in this survey and previous conversations, we appreciate that. And we know they have a very valid concern or something that they want to express. So without going through the details of the first survey, we had about six thousand respondents. That was overwhelming. And I think we had that because it was the first time we had an organized way for people to talk to us after COVID started. On this survey, we still had a pretty large return, just under two thousand six hundred responses, twenty-five ninety-four. So a good response on the survey. So let's just, let's just go ahead and take a look at the survey. The first few items are just demographic items to let you know who responded and how many there were and what their particular situation is. I didn't mean to leave out hourly people or teachers who don't have students assigned to them. But their comments were not very different from some of the other groups, and those were very small groups of people. I think sixty-one teachers maybe who didn't have students assigned to them and about a hundred hourly employees. So, but other than that, we tried to focus on the three largest groups, which were teachers, students, and parents. So just looking at teachers, we had three hundred ninety-nine teachers respond to the survey. On the first survey, that was like five hundred and thirty-two, but still a nice response. On, on the first survey, that was uh like 532, but still a nice response. Um, and all the groups were a little bit smaller. Forty five percent, a little over forty five percent were elementary teachers. Uh, 104 middle school, 113 high school. And if you look at the, the organization of our school system, about half of our students are K5. Cause there are six grade levels there, you know, kindergarten through fifth. And then we have the upper grades, you know, we have um six through 12. And so that's pretty close. It was a, a little heavily more responded to just slightly by middle and high school teachers. So you can see that response level. The second uh grid there, and like I said, we'll publish this after the meeting unless there's something uh that we need to correct on it or fix unless there's some objection. We asked them what their teaching model was. About 28% of them were doing all in person, so we know those are probably elementary teachers. We had about 20% of them doing AB, so we know they're middle school and high school teachers. You did not have the survey?
We've got a summary, but we don't have it broken down.
We got your talking points, is all.
Yeah, we got your talking points, but we don't have.
I asked Brooke before the meeting which one you had. Okay. It's my fault.
I'm like, ah.
Okay. Hold on with this live stream. Go copy those, they have my notes on them. This, oh, is this where you uh comment uh while something going on in a meeting? Uh, this, today, I, I summarized and finished the survey results and then I worked on. The summary comments which were to keep me in line and I apparently gave Brooke the wrong one. So that is on me, so hold on to me live stream folks. Plus, we will publish that for you, we'll put it online and send it out in emails and everything right after the meeting. I had a very special day, I'll tell you about more of that later. I hear them talking about me. Back by the coffee machine. They're not the first people who've done that, by the way.
Lot of talk around the coffee machines.
Yeah.
Office setting.
I appreciate Dr. Javen coming because I know that he's been pulled a hundred and twenty five thousand different directions and stuff. He has been very faithful, he has also been very encouraging. Um, I had a phone conversation with him last week. Uh, and you know, I think we're all nervous about this. We want our people to be safe, but we also are, you know, very concerned about our children learning as much as they can learn. And um, I went to a superintendent's meeting in Greensboro last week. They put us in a big ballroom and put us two or three to these great big tables and it was, you know, really very, very safe and mask and hand sanitizers and all that stuff. And um, there are a lot of people across the state who have given up and they think that this is a wasted year. And I'm, you know, I'm here to tell you while we're waiting on those copies to be made for you, we just don't believe that way in Haywood County. Uh, it has been a tough year. Um, it has been a year where people have lost their lives prematurely. It has been a year where we've had lots of rules and regulations changed from federal leave to different kinds of plans we can use. And being given two different ones or three different ones at the same time. But we do, uh, at least administratively, and I think across our teachers and hourly paid workers and everyone else. We, you know, we just don't believe in giving up on, on our students. And um, we're never going to do that perfectly, but we, we really do. Uh, pride ourselves in making sure that we're doing as much as we feel like we can do safely. And not just uh, you know, throwing, throwing your hands up. I have friends downstate and some of them still, you know, really haven't had any students on campus at all. And we'll show you a little bit date, a little bit of data later about the impact of um. Having students there every day when we look back to two falls ago and with the blended learning that we have now. Is that the original? You'll, you'll have the benefit of my scrawled notes, we will not publish those.
Please.
Those were, I'm not even sure you can read them.
One quick question, Dr. Noddy. Are we kind of monitoring the kids that are not participating on the uh.
You give them that.
Online learning? I mean, that's, the concern I have is I, I feel like a lot of the kids that are not in person are not participating, some of them at all, is that the case?
That is the case, we have a little bit of data at the end.
Okay.
Um, that we want to share about um. One of the easiest pieces of data to get because we keep it every year is failure rates for students who fail one or more classes at the high school. And so we have a little bit of historical data and we can look at that uh versus uh. Our blended students versus remote only students. And so I think that's an interesting look, I want to thank um. Well, a number of people really worked on that, I think Carol Fox did most of the calculations and adding and subtracting and that kind of stuff. We also had uh William Harold, who's a new AP at Tuscola, who's a math person doing some calculations. And um Charlie, I couldn't think, uh, I had Inman because I know who the, that nice lady married. But Charlie Inman uh doing a lot of those calculations at Pisgah, working on that. So anyway, I digress. Uh, so going back to the survey, again, we focused on um the three big groups. Uh, if we look, uh, the first uh page or so, and Brooke, Brooke has one more page, she'll bring us in a minute, but we don't need it now. We don't need it at this moment. The first page is demographic, page or so is demographic information, it tells us about the groups. We had uh 399 teachers participate, that's a little less than last, last time, but there were, there was a little less than every category. Okay? About forty five percent elementary, twenty six percent middle school and, and twenty eight high school. As I was saying, about half of our teachers are at the elementary level, um, six grades there and another half. A little more than half at the middle and high school, so not a bad proportion. Teachers across the district, a few more middle and high school. We asked them in the second table there, uh, what they were teaching uh currently. Uh, twenty eight percent, uh, and it's, we go to the tenth decimal or hundredth on some of these folks who are listening in, we'll publish this for you in a little bit. About twenty eight percent were doing all in person, 20% blended, which is a middle and high school. Uh, eight point two seven percent remote only, and then we had about 42% doing a combination of the above. And if you'll remember, we do have Tuscola doing synchronous learning, so they would be in that group. We also have uh some student, uh, uh, teachers, excuse me, that picked up extra sections. So they would be doing some of both at Pisgah and Wayneville Middle and Bethel. Um, so that's a representation of what, of what they're teaching and who the teacher participants were. Under students, um, th- this is, this is really, really interesting, so. Uh, and you would, I think, expect this, uh, a little over 7% of the students were elementary. Thirty one were middle school and 61 were high school. Now that makes sense if you think about it, who's a little more independent, will grab the computer, fill out the survey, you know, a high school student probably more likely to do that than an elementary student. But I think we just keep in mind that, that these are older students participating in the survey, that's not good or bad, just a fact. We asked them what their uh model was, their learning model right now. Six point three percent were all in person. Um, again, those are mainly the elementary ones. Blended, AB, uh, the vast majority of them, 67%. And then about 26% remote only, I thought that was really interesting because you know, our remote only group has been between 20 and 30% across the district. So that's probably a pretty good representation of our remote only students. On the back of that page or the next page, I don't know if they copied that front back or in two pages, we have um. The uh parent uh demographic information. Now, most of the students who filled this out were middle school and high school, but you can see from looking here that 53% of the parents that filled this out. Eleven hundred and thirteen parents. Over 3,000 on the first survey, so all the groups were a little bit smaller, but 1113 parents, 53% of them have elementary children. So those were the parents who were more often compelled to participate. About 22, almost 23% middle school, 24% high school, total of a, a, 1113 uh parents filled this out. We asked them what their students were doing um in terms of learning models, all in person. Forty five percent, over 500 of them, again, that's reflective of the elementary parents filling this out. Blended learning, 398, which was middle and high, and the remote only about 19, not quite 20%. So that's the demographic information, just to let you know who and what. Any questions about uh just the demographic information? So if you look at the sheet with the two uh blacked out squares on it, that's the uh, the next question. And then the backside of that is the, the next page. So one question we asked the students was, well, how do you learn best? And we asked that just, just to the students. Uh, they said all in person, 64% of them, so you know, almost two thirds of them. And, or um 20%, 20.5% of them said blended. And so uh, we thought that was pretty good, they recognized that they do better if they're at school. There were 14.88% that said they do better with remote learning and we really do have some students, probably not as a whole. Uh, not all remote learning students are doing well. But we really do have some remote only students who do a fantastic job, it's their demeanor. It's the support they have at their household, they have the broadband, they may be in high school and they've had online college classes before. So there is a proportion of students who do really well, it's not a, not a very large proportion, but it is. Uh, most of the following questions, we asked the very same questions to all the groups. And so I think these questions um may be helpful in helping the board decide if we stay the course on the current. Uh, organizational structure that we have, or if you, we make some kind of change. So the next thing that we asked was during COVID-19, I believe students should learn. And we gave them the um, the uh three big options and then we broke those down in the next two questions more specifically. So they could give us ideas about A and B. Okay? So the first question there, I believe students should learn this particular way during COVID-19. The uh predominant answer, really, the answer with the highest percentage from all three groups was in-person learning. Forty six point eight percent of teachers, uh, thirty seven point eight, nine percent students. And then a, a very large um compared to the other two groups, 56, over 56% for parents. You can see there that we broke elementary, middle and high school responses down in each area. Because if you're like me and you've worked at all three areas, you know that they're all teaching, but those really are different places to teach and it's just really different. Uh, all three at levels have their, their real benefits and their challenges. So um, under blended learning, um, how should students learn? Thirty six percent of the teachers said blended, 35% of the students said blended. And 21% of the parents said blended. And under remote only, teachers were actually the lowest group, which I think indicates that they, they really do want their students with them. Uh, 16% of the teachers said they should be remote only. Students, 27% and uh parents, 22%. Uh, again, not, not to be frivolous here or make jokes, but I think if I were a student, uh, that would make sense to me. Because typically the, the teachers and the, and the parents want them going to school more than some of them want to go. So I think those numbers are a little reflective of that. Uh, after that question, we started teasing out what Plan A might look like and, and how they felt about the current Plan A. So the next question was the state allows. Families to select remote only learning for the remainder of the 2021 school year. We wanted to remind people that that is an option through the remainder of the year. When the state allows Plan A in person on a daily basis, which option should be used in Plan A? So the choices were five days a week, four days a week, or even Plan B, if you were allowed to do Plan A. So you can see the responses there, uh, 30.8% of the teachers said five days a week under Plan A. Thirty two point two five percent of the students said five days a week for Plan A. And then again, that very, that larger percentage, 52.8% of the parents said. If we were doing Plan A, it should be five days a week. The four days a week option was 34% for teachers, 28 for students and 15 for parents. And then going to Plan B. Um, when you are uh able to do Plan A, 27% for teachers, 32 for students and 26 for parents. I'm just running through these, do you, I, I, I was going to say, do you want to talk about these as we go?
Well, that one's pretty interesting, that, that, that particular question, because if you look at the elementary school responses. They're talking about, you know, their, their option is just elementary teachers is four or five days in person.
Yeah.
The high school, however. Significantly s- still says Plan B.
Yeah, uh, and, and the people can't see this data yet, we'll publish it when we get through, but, but 62 of the elementary teachers said five days. Just to tease out what Dr. Rogers is talking about, 31 said four days and 34 said blended, so clearly.
I guess what I'm saying is if you look at the overall number.
Right.
Add them all together, it looks weighted toward uh. Four days per week, but if you break it down into the subsections, the upper grades are really leaning still toward. A blended, an elementary toward in person, if I'm reading this right.
Yep.
I don't know how else I could read it, but. That's interesting.
Any other observations on that? Okay, if you'll flip that sheet over, then we asked essentially the same question with some options about Plan B. The state allows again for remote learning for the remainder of the year, we want to remind people of that. And then the question really was, when the state allows Plan B blended learning on a rotational basis. Which option should be used under Plan B? So we're asking them about Plan B, and again, our middle school and high school people know all about that. Our elementary people know all about Plan A, because that's what they're experiencing. So under teachers. Um, the, the, well, let me read the three options first. The first option was five days per week, every other week, this is the current middle school and high school Plan B plan. So they could select what we're doing now. The next option was uh the two one two model, uh, two days per week for one group. A remote learning day in between and two days for the other day. And then the last option under Plan B was something that we put in there because of what we heard from teachers and principals and other people. During all of our discussions and comments, we we kept hearing um people say to us, well, we want the students and we want them in front of us, when we can get them in front of us. But we'd like to see both groups every day. Every week, excuse me, thank you, Jill. We wanna see both groups every week. So we put this in here, which is basically if you're Group A, you'd go Monday, Tuesday, one week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the next week. If you're Group B, you'd go Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, one week, and Thursday, Friday, the next week. Basically, you'd keep you'd keep Monday and Tuesday all the time, or you'd keep Thursday and Friday all the time, and you'd ro- rotate back and forth between the Wednesdays. Uh when we look at the data, and I'll go through it, that was the least popular one. We're not sure if it was because it was new or it seemed confusing. I have had some conversations with with uh parents and teachers since then, that that one seemed confusing. But we were just trying to put that one in there because we had heard that kind of request. We want them in front of us, but we'd like to have them every week, some of them every week. So looking at this data on Plan B, five days per week, every other week, teachers twenty-eight percent, students forty-eight percent, parents forty-eight percent. So among the s- the students and parents that responded, that was their choice. Mm mm not so for teachers. The second item was the the higher response for teachers, the two-one-two plan. Sixty-two point seven percent teachers, and then uh thirty-two for students and twenty-four for parents. And then um the model that we just made up and put in there because we thought it was addressing having students in front of you, but getting the A group and the B group both both in one week and not losing an in-person day. Only five percent for teachers, twelve percent for students, seventeen percent for parents. That was just not a very popular option. I don't know if it was because they didn't understand it, or it just seemed too difficult to manage. Any questions about that? Have one more and then some related thoughts, and then certainly I know you all will wanna talk about a lot of this.
Why do you think the teachers are leaning more toward the the two off one-two than what we're currently? I mean, I've talked to several teachers lately lately, but what what do you feel like? Yeah, cuz it looks like they're they're definitely leaning more toward doing that than than sort of staying the course of what we're doing.
Well, I think we probably have to ask them. We've talked to some of them, and some of our principals have gone back after we met with principals yesterday and talked to them about that. I do think they're probably um just tired, you know. Uh we're we're all worn out in COVID. We really, really are. We and 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 if they had a remote day in the middle, it would s- still be some learning, but it wouldn't be like in-person learning, and I suspect that's what it is. Um a day to reload, um still have to do some instruction, either synchronously or asynchronously, but I just imagine that's it. The other thing that um again, and I'm being speculative here. Certainly not part of the survey response. The the survey tells us what. It doesn't always tell us why. When I went to the superintendent's meeting last week, a lot of school districts are doing the two-one-two plan. But uh they're also requiring, they didn't change classes like we did and make remote only sections for a for a lot of people. Or uh all in-person sections or A-B sections. Most school systems said to their teachers, um even school systems in the region, okay, here's the class you got at the beginning of the year. You're going to teach them under Plan A, and you're gonna teach the ones in front of you and the remote only ones. Or if you're in Plan B, you're gonna teach the A ones when they're there, the B ones when they're there, and the remote only ones. And I think if that's what you're doing, and some of our neighboring school systems have done that, it makes a lot more sense to have that day to reload. And we have a few situations where that's going on. But we, you know, really didn't ask our people to do all three unless they were picking up an extra section and we were paying them for it at the high school level. Or it was an elementary class where they had all the students in front of them, but three who were remote only, and they wanted to do that, so. There's not a clear-cut response on any of this. So, you know, why they asked for that, I don't know. Uh but, you know, that's my best speculation. They have done, I will tell you, and I'll I'll brag on them here a little bit in just a minute, when we look at some of the ancillary performance data. I will tell you, our people, um even though I'm sure they're tired, like every other teacher who's actually going to work in the state, uh they're they're doing a pretty good job, and I think we've got some evidence to show that. So there should be one other sheet that Brooke brought out. And this is my day to lose sheets of paper. So it's the one that has the question at the top. What are your primary concerns about in-person or blended learning? And this is the same uh set of items that we asked about back before the first semester. And we wanted to see if those had changed a lot. I did add one item at the bottom that um uh did not get on the parent list. But basically, again, for those people listening into the live stream, what are the things that you're concerned about? Public health regulations not being followed, forty-eight percent of the teachers were concerned about that, forty-two percent of students, and thirty-three percent of parents. Um that was a pretty big concern um back before the first semester. Confidence in procedures uh to disinfect schools, thirty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-nine for parents. I'm going across here, teachers, students, parents. Availability of disinfecting materials, and and as a side note, we have plenty of that. But people are still, I think, concerned that we we might not have it or we might run out. But thirty-seven percent of teachers were concerned about that, seventeen percent of students and twenty-two percent of parents. Use of personal protective equipment, thirty percent of teachers concerned, twenty-two percent of students, twenty-four percent of parents. Childcare, I thought this one was really interesting. I thought these numbers would be larger until we teased out the data. Twelve percent of teachers concerned. Uh six percent of students, which that makes sense. If I'm a student, I'm not really worried about, you know, childcare. That's mom or the teacher's problem or someone's concern. Uh but nineteen point four, um you know, going on a almost a third of our parents, and with eleven hundred and thirteen parents concerned about that, that's, you know, that's two hundred and fifty-plus parents that were that are concerned about that. Uh readjustment to school life, twenty-two percent concerned from teachers. Um thirty-one for students and twenty-five per- percent uh percent for parents. I think, again, this is speculative. I think that concern was a little lower for teachers because most of them have seen students in front of them and see that, you know, most of them have readjusted pretty well. Uh still a level of concern there. School bus transportation, you can see not much of a concern across the board, twelve percent, twelve percent, eight percent. Having in-person interactions with others, uh teachers were concerned about that, thirty-eight percent. Students, twenty-nine percent, and parents, thirty percent. I think they are worried, not maybe as much about what they're doing themselves, but but having interaction with others. Uh someone in the uh that I live with is medically compromised. Uh thirty-one percent concerned from teachers, twenty-three from students, and twenty from parents. And then I added this question just because I thought it would be interesting, and of course, in my imperfectness, I left it off the parent response. Um but I don't have a concern about in-person learning. Um so twenty-four percent of the teachers actually marked that one. Um and thirty, thirty-nine percent of the students, and um who knows what the parents would have marked had I gotten it on there. I don't know that that's relevant to making the decision uh about the schedules, but I thought that was interesting. I know it has been uh a long time and and um not having the uh right sheets of paper in front of you to begin with, to begin with. We're concerned, but if I could just share a couple other things. So these are related factors. I don't know that we use these to decide if the decision that you've made previously changes or not, but there are a couple things that are related. And I think uh the first one is the effect of not having students in person. And you can see on the notes page that you did originally have under number eight. Uh we took the two large high schools where we collect failure rates. And if and we went back to for Pisgah and for Tuscola, fall of twenty nineteen, pre-COVID. And we looked at the the percentage of students that had failed one or more courses the first semester. And it was five percent and twelve percent. That's not too unusual. Uh it's usually a little closer to five than it is twelve. From my recollection. Um I don't want um the folks at the high school going, well, it's actually the other way. But anyway, five percent and twelve percent. When we move to this fall, with the data that we have so far, knowing that we've got, you know, a couple weeks left. Right now, the failure rate for students failing one or more courses is forty-four percent at Pisgah and twenty-two percent at Tuscola.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, I'm sorry, forty-four and forty-two.
We don't want that.
Well, we'll publish it and everybody, everybody can find my mistakes there. My verbal mistakes. So you can see that COVID has had an impact on us, whether it's blended learning or remote learning. So but when you break that down, I think it's even more telling. When you break it down to blended students, and again, we're talking about high school, not elementary. When we talk, when we break it down to blended students, uh it was fifteen percent for Pisgah and sixteen for Tuscola. I personally think that's amazing, given we're in the middle of a pandemic. We were all remote learning early in the year, and we'd been blended really since the end of October. I I just think that's amazing. I will tell you that there are schools across the state that don't do much better than that in in a good semester. So kudos to the folks who are engaged, the students who are engaged, and our teachers who are working with them. I mean, that's just a real compliment to what they have done during a very difficult year. Now, you you see the next column, and the people listening to the live stream can't see that yet. But the next column is the thing that is of great concern to me. If we look at the remote only students, even those, even including those who are doing asynchronous learning, you know, that kind of stuff, there're some of some of them are logging in. Not a lot of them, but some of them are logging in. It's twenty-nine percent failure rate this point in the semester for Pisgah and twenty-six for Tuscola. So that's what's going on educationally. It's, you know, we're just doing better when we have them in front of us in terms of their learning. And so um you know, that is a very imperfect uh and not-so-quick summary of the key uh survey items, and you know, we'd just let let you all discuss that or ask us questions. I don't know if they'll let you talk or not, Mrs. Barker.
I just wanted to say a few things. Uh Mr. Francis, sorry I was late initially coming in. I was meeting with some parents, but to go back to your question about the teachers and just why um do those surveys look that way. And I've talked to a lot of them, talked to the principals, and I think just a couple of things. A digital, this digital environment is taking longer. It it is more, it's harder for them. They've gotta upload pieces. They've got, it's just a different environment, and it does take longer for them. Um their planning in places has been reduced because they are having to do temp checks or you know, all those systems that have been in place and real orderly are very different now. So there is some reduced planning at at schools too. Um especially, we see that in the elementary school, that loss of planning um has been, you know, significant in places. Also, I've heard the teachers talk about, when you're teaching a class and you they're all in front of you, you can walk around and say now, Mister Steven, you're not gonna do that again. Now you go back and do this problem, and Mister Nick, you need to do this. Well, they can't do that. They're having to give feedback in different ways. So they're remote students. The kids aren't in front of them. They're having to type and re- write feedback to them and 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 grade all these pieces of information, you know, that they're collecting. Especially the middle schools that are one week on and one week off, the week that they're not there, they're, you know, signing a lot of work cuz they're really trying to teach a lot in that week, and they're doing a fantastic job of it, but then they gotta grade that work. And, you know, they've also got the kids in front of them, so uh ju- those are just some of the things that I've heard them say. So I do think it is, you know, that time, I think that's why they, some of the reasons they answered that way from what I've heard. I just wanna say, I think they're doing a phenomenal job too, and I think this this piece of data and looking at some early scores coming in um on our ESEs. I I almost cried. They were, they were, they were very good. So I just wanna tell our teachers out there, thank you.
It's one thing, Miss Barker, too, you know, you're talking about the teachers and the time they're spending. That was some of the concerns that I'd had, not just two hundred and fifteen days, but the extra hours they're putting into all this, which it's very plausible. I'm very thankful that they are doing that, and that's, you know, that's why I say give them all the praise we can because they, it is a lot of extra work. I mean, it's, go back to the old days, yeah, I remember back years and years ago when I was a little boy, my grandmother, she, she's grading papers at nighttime too. You know, cuz they didn't even have planning periods back in those days, probably. But and and that's like I say, all this stuff's been cut down for them, so it is a lot of extra work, and and I know there's there's been questions, well, is this my contract? Is this the times that we, you know, are we actually, you know, are we we doing more than we're expected to do or more than we're contracted to do or whatever, and and I think they are. They're are, they are doing more than they're than they may have been originally signed up for that profession. But it is something that's got to be done, and and it's it and it will show with the results of these children learning. And and I do thank them as well, cuz it's it is, it's a lot of hard work, and a lot of teachers are putting so many extra hours in time. And I do thank them for that. But yeah, that's been the other concern too, this remote only, it's been my biggest question, cuz I hear so many that's remote only, that they're not even signing on. They're just not doing it.
I I I I hear this repeatedly. I've not had a, I've not he- had any groups that I've spoken with that said anything different. I have talked to some individual uh students and parents and teachers who have that student that does great, remote only, and they they're there. I mean, they're kicking it and getting after it, but it's a pretty small percentage. The thing, the thing that um uh the things that are going well are going really, really well. I think our teachers are making really the best hay that can be made during a pandemic when they have the students in front of them. Uh they're to be commended for that. And then the things that are not going well are not going well. You know, we've had, you know, three little employee groups have some problems with COVID. And many of the students who are in their off week or quiet week, A-B, aren't engaged as they should be, and a number of the remote only students just aren't engaged. So I think what we have here is a tale of um really good success. And and it's a credit to a lot of people who are working really, really hard. And uh but when we don't have them in front of us, um we're not doing as well with them.
I think we need to look at this survey real carefully too, about how it was worded on that. Sixty-two point seven percent of the teachers responding to that. And let's kind of listen to what maybe we get input over the weekend. And I don't know what the timeline would be if we're gonna do anything different than what we're doing now, but I think we need to really listen to what people are in the trenches, so to speak, and and uh cuz I think that it'll, maybe we have an opportunity to engage those kids like you're talking about being off that whole week.
On the A B theme.
Yeah.
Get them engaged, so. That'd be my only comment.
Yeah. The, um, I feel like I missed something too. You, you all can tell that I'm, I'm like some of the other folks. I've, uh,
A lot of, a lot of things going a lot of different directions.
Sorry?
A lot of things going a lot of different directions and, uh,
Well, some of this is very hard to quantify just because there's so much, uh, presumption. And you, you don't know where they're coming from when they answer a question uh, versus reality. You know, for, for example, you, you brought up one of them, which was the, uh, public health regulations not being followed. You know, those, if, at first glance, when you look at that, those numbers are enough to panic you for just a little bit, but there's some assumptions that that are in that versus what's reality. We know that people are following protocols. So it, it makes these numbers very difficult to put your hands around. You know what I mean? I may not be making a whole lot of sense. In my head, it's making a lot of sense, but y'all may not be.
Well, I, I think people are legitimately concerned about that and they may not be concerned about themselves. They may not even be concerned about the kids in their room or the teacher in their room, but I do think that they're concerned that someone won't and someone might get sick. I think the good news is, is especially with student transmissions, and we've said this many times through the summer with childcare and athletic workouts and pre K and all those things, we've just not seen student transmissions yet. Um, Dr. Javen tells me we certainly could and that we don't need to get too worried about that. He said it while he was here earlier. We just need to make sure that group does not become a larger group. If we have that. So I think those are very legitimate concerns. Um, and thankfully, right now, they're not concerns that we've seen yet. Um, in reality.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, i- is it a concern based off of assumption or is it concern based off reality? Well, the reality is we know that everybody knows the protocols. We know that we're not gonna run out of disinfectant. But yet we still had high responses there. So there's a concern there that, that, that doesn't match up with reality and you gotta take that into account as you move forward. If you don't, you make some bad decisions.
I think the thing that I did leave off was, uh, right under, I was bragging on the teachers for the fail rates at the high school because those are remarkable, given what we've been through this year. Uh, is the, a, a side concern being, not being able to use, uh, state transportation funds to pay bus drivers. If it's a, if it's not an in-person day. And again, it, uh, Jill Barker tells me all the time and, and we had uh, one of the parents in the parent advisory committee meeting earlier say this, you know, or maybe it was someone we talked to on the phone today, you know, it's never one thing. I mean, you can't really make decisions this big based upon one of these answers or one of these questions. It's, it's a big picture thing. I will say, again, not trying to limit your discussion, I'm proud of what our people have done. Uh, we started with as much as we could do. Um, and we've gotten after it, you know, we've seen students really uh, pretty often in person, not quite as early as we could have in some instances, but pretty early. And I, and I think we're seeing some good results from that. The downside of that is who, uh, it, 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 it takes a lot of time and energy and effort to do that.
Well, that's, that's my biggest concern through all of this is teachers have worked very hard and, and performed uh, and went well above and beyond the call of their duty and what was expected of them. Uh, but they're gonna get tired. You know, we're not halfway through yet and, and they're gonna get tired. And, and we've got to make sure that we take that into consideration because if, if they reach that place, then we're gonna see these other numbers fall as well. And I don't know how you get there, but we, we've got to take that into, into account that these, the people that are standing in front of the classrooms, teaching every day to different groups and sending home and doing asynchronous and taking on extra sections and, and all of these things, make phone calls on the weekends and they're gonna get tired. And, and we've got to make sure that somehow, some way, locally. We've gotta, we've gotta take in all of that into account and take care of them.
I, I think, I, I think, go ahead. I think, uh, I think that's what we've been weighing really since we sent the survey out before Thanksgiving. You know, we, we knew that we didn't have the evidence of it like we sort of found here. We knew our people were doing a really good job. And we knew that if we added probably a lot more days when students weren't there, that that might be diminished, but we also knew that, um, the, the teachers in particular carry the instructional load and that they're gonna wear out. So I don't know the answer. The two-one-two might not be enough in-person days, but it might be okay. One of the ideas that I heard just yesterday was that, you know, you could do, and again, I'm, we're just talking tonight, right? It's a work session. One of the things that we might could do was, you know, keep our current plan, but build in um, a day a month or something where they had, um, uh, an asynchronous remote day or a couple of days a month. The question is, how do you balance the quality of instruction we're getting right now with giving our folks an opportunity to breathe? And I don't, again.
My concern is like my granddaddy used to say, you can work a good mule to death.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, I would like for us, one, based on, uh, what Dr. Rogers was saying, is, is looking for ways of helping our teachers out. And I talked to Jill a little bit yesterday about, um, I've heard some other districts. I know one of the concerns from some teachers I've heard is they're having to put their grades in three different places, you know, in, in Google and Power School and and there's a, there's apparently something out there where when you put it in Google Classroom, it automatically uploads it into Power School and, uh, but it's a system that we may have to look into purchasing for the teachers, but you know, there's little things that we could do to try to help them to, to take a little bit more of that work off of them. I mean, that's, I'd love to be able to look for stuff like that to help them.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry that took so long. We do have a few more.
Important subjects.
Yeah, we do have a few more items.
Sure.
For you.
I do have one announcement. I just found out that, uh, Clark will continue to be on the Board of Education. He texted me a minute ago and said that, uh, did not get appointed as the county commissioner that, uh, Ms. Best did. She'll best be your county commissioner. I'm glad, uh, Ronnie's still with us, to be honest with you. Good board member.
Uh, Dr. Putnam?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll try cutting my mic on. That works a whole lot better.
Um, I wanted to, uh, I, I think you have Chairman Francis, the, uh, uh, DPI survey, uh, results. Or have been provided those. Uh, every five years DPI requires that we do a facility needs survey. Uh, it's a, it's a checklist, checklist of sorts and questions. It asks questions like, what is the age of the building? Uh, and you have to list it by school. Uh, so there, there's a facility need questionnaire, uh, for Bethel Elementary all the way down to Waynesville Middle. And you go through it piece by piece. What is the oldest facility on your campus? You know, how many square feet? When was the last time, uh, anything was renovated? How much parking area do you have? And you have to go through all that. Uh, and it, it creates a calculation and it tells you, um, what your greatest, um, areas of need are. Um, it's a really helpful tool in planning and budgeting. There is also the, the possibility of grant dollars. So we're, uh, Josh Meese and I are gonna go after those just as hard as we can. Uh, not sure how our new, I don't know if any of you read the paper, but I'm not sure how our new tier designation for the county factors in, but I, I, I would say that is favorable with us slipping uh, a tier and, and being deemed as in greater need than we were in years prior. So it may make those grants even more readily available. Uh, but you submit it and, um, DPI, uh, looks it over and then it sometimes in some instances will make you eligible for grant dollars and we'll certainly seek out every grant dollar we can get. Any questions about the facility need survey? There being none?
There he is.
I'll move to the next, um, which is, I'll make sure I get the term right, or am I, I'm on the right topic? Moving to, um, the Commissioner's Central Office Resolution. Um, I sent to Mr. Schmatters a, a resolution that they issued for funding, uh, the Central Office Project. Um, it is in legal jargon, so I will spare you the reading of that resolution and give you just an easy synopsis here. Um, what will happen is, um, as this project goes along, um, we've got a couple of options. We can pull down capital fund balance, uh, in the amount. We have about two point three-three million in there. We can pull down all of that money or pretty close to it, leaving a fund balance of about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Okay? That's what it would, we would have to borrow or take out one point nine million total of our fund balance to complete the central office project that is already currently at two point six. Okay? So I, I'm gonna try to explain this really, really well. So the county has already given us seven fifty. Of that seven fifty, approximately a hundred and fifty's been spent in replacing the roof as best as abatement and removal. And, um, that takes us down to about six hundred thousand. So if you take one point nine out of the two point three or two million out of the two point three somewhere in that neighborhood and pair it with the six left, that's enough to complete the project. Okay? Um, in that two point six million is contingency, approximately a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand uh, for change orders that are sure to occur in any large project like this. Or for furniture. Uh, so that's what takes, uh, puts it right at two point six. So we've had discussion with the commissioners, Dr. Rogers and Dr. Naulty. Y'all feel free to jump in at any time. Uh, what we did not want, whether we pulled that down and decided to use all of the capital or whether we pursued a loan, we did not want the project delayed. So in the Commissioner's, uh, resolution that they passed, if we were to pursue a loan to complete the project, they would front the money essentially. Up to two, two million. So if you take the six hundred thousand that's left of the original seven hundred and fifty, it's still sitting right there in, in our account for us to use. And you pair that with the two million that they're saying, hey, if you wanna proceed with the project, we're gonna front the money. We're gonna earmark it or designate it for you. And it'll be sitting there so the project's not delayed. We will then reimburse ourselves um, from state sales tax as money become, comes in or becomes available. So is that, there's more to it, but does that kinda, I'll stop there. Does that kinda make sense where we're at with it right at this moment?
I think so.
Okay. Um, so interest rates are good right now. Um, taking, uh, two million out of a two point three-three million fund balance leaves you a little, little, that's a pretty tight margin. Um, Jim Harley, I see you nodding your head. That is a pretty tight margin and, um, if, if we were to have a catastrophic event like a flood or a fire, um, those types of things, you, you have to have a roughly, uh, half million on hand, but really more like uh, seven hundred thousand on hand because your insurance will kick in, but you're gonna have to pay for things upfront and then get reimbursed. Uh, and they, you know, you can't really wait on insurance to cut a check. So that takes that margin a little close, but those are two options and I just wanted to give you some considerations for both. It's either a loan, uh, given that interest rates are good at this moment in time or it's pulling down capital fund balance uh, to, uh, a pretty low number of about, like I said, three hundred and forty thousand. Those are the two options before you, but the commissioners have passed a resolution uh, to do either or.
Dr. Rogers, are y'all gonna consider that at your building and grounds meeting Monday and kind of come back to the board with a recommendation out of that committee? Is that kind of the plan or?
That's the plan at this point, assuming that that's the desire of the whole of the board. Is we would come back with a recommendation, but I think it's good that we're discussing it here now so that, uh, we can sort of get input as we go into our meeting on Monday.
All right.
Uh, and, and basically just to knock it down, our decision is, do we spend our capital fund balance? Or do we borrow the money to finish central office? Freeing us up, freeing our money up to be able to be spent in other places, continuing to make improvements as we go along. Paying ourselves back as we go along as well. So that's really the decision is the way I see it. That we've gotta make.
My concern would be if we pull down that fund balance too far. You have another flood or a situation because I know that those that were on the board at that time, when we did have floods down here, I mean, you had to spend the money to get reimbursed. If you don't have the money, you can't spend it to fix stuff. So I know we were handicapped pretty much until the state came through. So I would caution, you know, using all the fund balance that way. My, that'd be my opinion.
Also, it's a lot of flexibility. Uh, Dr. Rogers hit on that. It, it, it does give you a lot of flexibility.
I think it'd be interesting to see what the building and grounds comes up with as an idea, but also discuss it in finance and see what they come back with and see where we stand as a whole.
We certainly will.
Is it?
This, this.
Is it the option to, um, split it? Pay part and borrow part?
Yeah, I think everything's wide open.
Yes, sir, Mr. Henson. It, there's nothing that says, you know, if we, uh, decided to take out a loan, we have to take out two million. It, it, it could be a split like you're speaking of.
Good question.
And you could honestly spend a million and borrow a million.
Yeah.
You've just gotta decide, is spending that million worth the risk? Uh, we're, we're gonna all hope and assume that twenty twenty-one is gonna be better than twenty twenty. Ain't no guarantees. So. It's, uh.
Can it be much worse?
Don't say that.
You don't put a challenge out there.
I just, I just wanna say, uh, as superintendent, I'm, I'm very nervous about spending down to three hundred thousand. I mean, if we had a catastrophic roof fail, we may not be able to cover it.
Well, you've had time to process this. Where's your head on this whole thing?
Uh, again, the, these decisions really do lie with the board, but I don't mind giving you a recommend- Uh, again, the, these decisions really do lie with the board, but I don't mind giving you a recommendation at all. I'm very nervous about not having any capital fund balance there. So, uh, and again, just a recommendation, if I were gonna borrow, I'd probably borrow at least one point five. And again, that gives you a good bit of cushion for catastrophic events. And then the difference between borrowing one point five and two in terms of borrowing cost.
Not a lot of money.
So again, I defer completely to the, you know, finance buildings and grounds and the board decision, but I'm very nervous about. Um, I've just been in situations in the past where we had catastrophic events and we had to dismiss people, riff people, close schools. I don't ever wanna go back there. So I'm just nervous about leaving three hundred thousand in the capital reserve that's held by the county.
Okay, that's something to ponder over the weekend and study and think about. Next subject, I guess, if there's.
Mrs. Barker needs to tell you a little bit about school improvement plans so you can vote on them Monday.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, Brooke's gonna help me navigate here. Um, every two years, the state of North Carolina requires schools to have improvement plans. This year, they extended that deadline until December. They're usually due in September and they've extended that deadline. So we will, um, Brooke has sent you for, for you to preview um, all the school improvement plans, the elementary, middle and high school improvement plans. When you look at these, you're gonna see two different formats. So I don't want you to get confused about that and I need to explain. Um, several of our schools um, have to fill out a required state improvement plan and, and the format we use in that's called, the platform is called NC Star. So theirs, uh, their plans will look different from our schools that aren't required to use that. Okay? So when you start looking at those um, over the weekend, you'll see two different formats. But what I wanted to talk to you about, I wanna focus on the district plan tonight because it's an umbrella plan for our schools. But this is the major umbrella plan. These are the new statewide goals from the state board of education in North Carolina. There used to be um, Dr. Bill, five goals. It's now three goals. Um, so the whole time, you know, in the past, we did school improvement plans, we tried to, to look at five goals. There are now three. And so if you can see on these two pages, the highlighted bold goal one is to eliminate opportunity gaps by twenty twenty-five. Goal two, improve school and district performance by twenty twenty-five. And goal three, increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student by twenty twenty-five. Underneath these goals, there are objectives and then within those objectives are even very specific components. So you will see these addressed um, word for word by our schools that do not have to complete NC Star plans. The NC Star state plans, their wording is a little different. Okay? Because they're our CSI, our targeted assistant schools and our comprehensive schools. And so they got in, into that plan because of a subgroup not meeting their data. So a lot of their goals are in reference to that. Okay? But I can answer any questions after you look at them on Monday. But I did want you to see this umbrella. And I do wanna briefly, um, we did get some parent feedback on our district improvement plan. So I did want Brooke to pull that, we can look at that. And I'll, and I wanna give you enough so you can look at it and then ask me some questions. So this plan starts out in a curriculum instruction group and looking at all the data we have from all of our stakeholders and we start determining the direction that we thought our system needs to go. And then um, everybody at the district level has had input into that plan. And so then we asked for input. We asked for stakeholder input from our parents into this and got some really good ideas for that. And then I tell them it's all, you know, your board approval and any, any ideas that you have that you think goals that we need to add. But when you, um, when you look at priority goal number one, and again, this is a draft, um, but this is, um, talks about eliminating eliminating opportunity gaps. The first goal you can see has seven objectives in the state, statewide on, on the sheet I gave you. We selected four of those that we wanted to focus on. Okay? So you can see those listed under objectives. Indicators are, are numbers that we see that indicate we may need to set this goal. Targets are where we want to be because, because of those indicators. Okay? So when you see an indicator, it's just some numbers we already have that are, we wanna work on. So I will um, go through these just briefly with you. Our district cohort grad rate in nineteen twenty, that was captured last year, even though our E O C data and things weren't. They did capture that district cohort grad rate. And as a district, that looks really good at eighty-eight percent, although some of our schools, as you know, with Central Haywood High School, um, are, their, their number is not that high. So, but we're looking at it through a district set of eyes. Okay? So we wanna talk about the cohort grad rate. In eighteen nineteen, our last good year of data, we had one thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight days of OSS for our students. Um, another thing, another indicator we'll be looking at is the number of students that are reporting with our new Say Something app. Well, they can report um, a variety of things that, um, behaviors and, and pieces that we may need to know to help them. We have instituted our new employee assistance program. So we'll be looking at those numbers and, and how to gauge how to help there. And also, um, there are, there is some information on here about our advanced placement courses. Um, so if you will look under objective four, component two on the statewide goals, it says to increase access readiness and attainment of early post-secondary opportunities such as A P, I B, which we don't have, C T E, dual credit enrollment, work-based learning and apprenticeship. So that is, that, we're gonna see this a lot in this plan. So that is in the state goal and we'll talk in a minute more about that. But one thing is, um, our students in A P, you can see the pass rates for those. Um, it, it is trending in the right direction, but they're still not where we want them to be. And we'll talk in a minute just about some other early post-secondary numbers. So where are targets just to increase that district cohort grad rate? So all of us together or is that above ninety percent? And again, our, our, our graduate for our traditional high schools is high in our early college. Um, so we really need to focus on our schools, you know, our Central Haywood High School, which our grant is helping with that. We do wanna decrease the number of OSS days and that's a pretty big target, twenty-five percent, although we're not having OSS in COVID. Our, our kids are very well behaved in COVID right now. So thank you students for that. Um, our teachers, I don't think would want to handle that right now. So thank you students if you're listening. So we'd like to see that reduced to thirteen hundred days. Um, seventy-five percent of our students with GPAs of two point two, two point seven nine will complete the new um, career and college ready goal modules. These are new modules required by the state of North Carolina um, for students that have um, academically have not passed um, uh, A C T, have failed um, English and math classes. They'll have to produce, they'll have to pass these modules prior to graduation. This was, has been in law for several years and has been put off and on hold. And so now we're here and it's gonna open up this spring. That is through the community college. Um, our teachers have been trained on that right now. And so our students will begin taking these modules. They have to complete them. They don't necessarily have to pass them, but they have to complete these modules in hopes that when they get to the community college, they won't take as many remedial courses. So that's a partnership um, that we're, you know, in conjunction with the community college. So we'll see how that goes over the next several years. We do want a hundred percent of our schools to receive some trauma-informed and resiliency professional development. Several of our schools have done that, but we want this to be a county-wide, every school, everybody on the same page. And Brandy has got um, a great P D that she's gonna offer over the next several years for that. We'd like to see fifty percent of our advanced placement scores. Um, those, that's another way kids, that will help them in post-secondary will be a level three or higher. We will begin issuing a college board capstone diploma beginning in June of next year for students who have passed five A P classes and have also um, passed a research, A P research class and an A P seminar class. We just started those this year. Our teachers were trained over the summer. Thank you teachers that are doing that. Those, those student, those classes are packed. And we're already seeing some good news and that they really like those advanced placement classes. It really prepares them for college. I don't know that they like the work, but we like them working. So um, we'll see, but we'll, we should be able to start issuing that some of those next year and the following year for our current sophomores, um, will be, really be eligible for that and we hope that will help. A big piece is, um, we would like to see twenty percent of our seniors at Central Haywood High School complete some early post-secondary opportunities. That is the heart of that grant that we wrote. The innovative partnership grant that I want to see in three years, when the kids graduate from Central Haywood High School to have something in their hand, um, uh, welding, a C and A, an electrical. All those pieces, they, they need that opportunity and they have not had that opportunity due to transportation. Um, several factors. We are, I'm so excited about that right now. We have a a liaison on that campus every day from the community college, getting those kids lined up in those classes. We already have got plans to um, transport some of it, even though they're gonna be all online in the spring again. Some of those labs are there, so the kids are starting to enroll in those. And excited. And we do have money in that grant, um, after we survey all the stakeholders and they're content that we will hopefully be able to offer a program or two on Central Haywood's campus. And I think that will really help with that dropout rate. So hats off to the work and that staff that's already going on. Okay? Y'all tired of me talking yet? Okay, here we go. I say goal one. How are we gonna decrease these OSS numbers? Um, the exclusionary discipline practices. Um, just a couple of big pieces on here. Um, we really wanna take, because our kids that are reporting on that Say Something app, this is new. Um, a lot of those students have, have had behavioral issues or they're reporting a behavior issue or something that could keep kids out of school. And so we hope throughout that and um, thank you, Dr. Putnam for getting that going. Um, I think that has been a real eye opening for us, but we need to link them with the appropriate mental health services and we'll talk about that later. And um, in that, but we know now COVID has taught us one thing. That when kids start getting suspended in school, in elementary school, and they're out of school and they continue to get suspended in middle school and high school. And then you can, you know, you combine that with day safe mist in school, you're setting a kid up for dropping out. And now we know we have a device, we have the ability for teachers to um, teach kids online. And I hope that we never go back to that. And so we've got several years to plan how we're gonna look at our kids that are suspended differently. And so that does not, it's not, I'm here, complete this work, copy out this dictionary. I really hope that we can make some good ground on that because it is hard once you get behind to, to gain that, that time. So um, y'all stop me if you have questions, okay? Or you may ask me Monday, I'm not sure. Okay, so improve, um, the next objective, improve school climate measures across schools and grade levels and you know, Mr. Hans and his department, we just recently implemented that employee assistance program. And so that has gone really, really well so far and we have people that are accessing that so far. And so um, there's a variety of, of pieces in that. So we'll see and hopefully across our schools, that will be something that we can continue to offer and our, our staff will take advantage of. Um, number two in this school climate, um, Dr. Putnam and his group really helped with this. You wanna read yours? I'll read it. Okay, utilize, do y'all want me to read all these, Dr. Bill?
Probably not, just the ones the board wants you to read.
Okay, well, this one is uh, talking about the required capital needs assessment for improvements. And so those are listed there. Um, and I think the rest of those we, we've talked about. I've hit most of them so far. So in objective three, now this one's near and dear to me, decreasing the high school dropout rate for each subgroup um, by increasing readiness, access, and we talked about this earlier. So we have, we are looking at our occupational course of study students in high school and looking at other options for them to graduate high school. We are currently, I'm looking at um, Central Haywood High School and just how those kids are referred and how that might look differently in three years based on this. And again, the grant at Central Haywood, hopefully with our dropout rate will help when these kids have some um, certificates. And again, we talked about the capstone diploma. Um, objective four, the remedial courses in college. We'll have some numbers on that at the end of this year, just how many kids are completing those courses. Okay, I'll go into school and district performance. And by twenty twenty-five, and again, this is just a lot about um, increasing the percentage of our kids that are proficient. So one of those is just using your resources wisely, objective number one, how you're using your resources and technology. Um, we have implemented a five-year district plan. We are only in that, you know, very early in that. Kim has reminded us, we've got five years within that and we're gonna have some gaps in funding. So we have to plan for this student device replacement cycle for grades three through twelve and continue to make plans for that. We now have iPads in our K two, thanks to um, the CARES Act funding that we got. Our kids using the Seesaw app have iPads, but we have to have a plan to replace those. Um, the, we heard great things in the survey. Dr. Bill didn't talk a lot about that. I don't know if he did or not. I don't think he did, but about communication. Our parents overwhelmingly said the communication was so much better from what we heard in the spring. And I think it's because we went to remind is the way we communicate with you and Google Classroom is how your assignments are posted. So this part that I wanted to say, it says on number four, sustain and expand full utilization. We, when COVID goes away, and it will go away, right? Um, we don't wanna lose everything we've got here. We have Google Classroom. We have these digital resources. We need to continue with that and expand on that and start planning for that in the next several years. Five talks about um, assistive technology for language acquis- acquisition. We're getting more and more kids in our district who do not speak English. And um, so just trying to make sure within those, those subgroups that we are prepared for them as those numbers continue to increase and can service, serve them too. Okay, and that goes into objective number two. We need to look at our E L program, our, those, the students that are coming in and probably just do a comprehensive needs assessment and see if there are ways that we can serve those students better. And I'm, we're looking at that. And then just overall, and the, the, the I hope you can click on this, but anyway, I'll make sure you can click on. Um, at tar- up at targets and indicators, there are some subgroup data. And so you can look at that. Um, but it talks about the gaps, the subgroups to address equity gaps in reading and math. And we do have those. So most of our schools don't have a lot of subgroups, but as a district we do. So if you're looking at Hispanic students, you know, you may not have enough to populate a subgroup at one school. As a district, we do have a subgroup. So when you look at those children across the board, we wanna address some of those issues too over the next two years. Objective number three, I feel, I feel like I'm still going over all of it. I just, I'm, I just want y'all to, okay? Objective number three, proficient students by reading and math. We are gonna host a district-wide math camp this, math camp this summer for the first time. We have offered a reading camp for several um, years due to, you know, R T A and that has been a very it's been very good for our students. An intensive two to three weeks with really great teachers has really helped our kids. This year, we'll offer this in math. We are concerned about those fundamental gaps in math. And we were offered that in grades K through six. We are gonna get some middle school students in that too. Because if you're at a middle school, your fifth graders coming in will get that camp. Your sixth getting, going to seventh grade will get it. And hopefully the middle schools will be able to offer like eighth grade, a camp for eighth grade also. So um, okay, and then another big piece of those, we'd really like to have a secondary E L A coach and we're working on, on funding for that in the district. The last goal, um, increase educator preparedness to meet the needs. Um, and the strategy there is to increase the number of culturally relevant equity-focused resources. And I know you know, cause you've got this on your calendar, but the first step in that equity um, conversation will be to provide implicit bias training for the board of education, superintendent, central office staff, principals and teachers. And so that was priority goal number three. Do y'all have any questions for me? I'm sorry that took so long, but, and the schools' plans are gonna look really different in there, but you can, if you have any questions about those, I'd be glad to answer on Monday night. And they should be attached, right Brooke? Do you wanna tell? I mean.
We've got the school plans, but we don't have the district plan. Or I, I couldn't find it here.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna send it to you.
We got school plans.
Y'all don't have this plan here? Okay, I will send you the district. Okay, I will, I will get y'all that plan.
Okay, that, that's my fault too. I'm, I'm leaving off papers tonight.
No, it's, it's, I will, um, I will get that to you tonight. Okay?
Very good.
Any questions? I'm sorry. Thank you to everyone that worked on that. And thank you to our parents that came tonight. They had some great, uh, do you wanna hear what their comment? Yeah, I loved what they said. They said tonight what they thought would be helpful is Yeah, I loved what they said, they said tonight, what they thought would be helpful as a district-wide is to offer parents training on. This technology, to have sessions on how to use this Google Chrome and how to use Seesaw and. And coming home and and so things like that, so we wanna get that back with our schools too, but that was one piece.
Not a bad one, you have to rely on the fourth grader to tell, show you how to get it going. And that happens quite often in my house, not with me, yeah, it does with me. Vicky's really good on it, but not uh, not me so much. I look, thank you, I look forward to looking at that in more detail, and um. For members who have questions of any of the stuff that's been presented tonight, just feel free to call our administrators and ask for those questions and uh. Like earlier, I announced Jill Best, it's Jennifer Best, I'm sorry, I I apologize for that, but Jennifer Best and. I failed to recognize too that we. Trial by fire, Logan Nesbit, uh we appreciate you being here tonight and uh. Now you know about the board of education, we do a lot of work on Thursday night and go through things fairly quick on Monday comparatively. But uh anyway, we do have one more uh. Item on our agenda for tonight, we do have uh the need to go into closed session, I can uh. Tell you already, we're not gonna take any action tonight, so we will adjourn from. Uh closed session, but at this point in time, I need a motion that we go into uh closed session at this time.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made a motion that we go into closed session, as a board, do I hear a second? Say, Mr. Burnett, any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those papers, say aye? Opposed, motion carries unanimously, we will go into closed session.